Welcome, White Marsh. This is our annual organizational meeting of January 4th, 2021. And as part of our charter, it is supposed to be late. I realize it's eight o'clock at night, which is unusual. This isn't usually how we have our meetings, except for this one this year. So I would like to turn it over to J.C., if you can begin us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, J.C. Fran, are you okay with?
So I'd make a motion to appoint Michael Drosner as temporary chair.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Well, thank you, everybody. Now, my name is temporary chair. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? No, I'm just kidding. Do I have a motion to appoint a secretary? Excuse me, let me get these. Let me get the proper language. Sorry to say. Do I have a motion to nominate Richard L. Mallard, Jr. as a temporary secretary for the Board of Supervisors?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Sounds like the ayes haven't. Congratulations, Rick.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to nominate Laura Boyle Nestor as Chair of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, I think we need to do a roll call for that, Rick.
Yes, we do. I'll go through. Sure. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, team. I'm honored to continue to work with everybody. I appreciate all the support and again, have very much a team approach here for this. So we will keep moving on here. Do I have a motion to nominate Fran McCusker as Vice Chair of White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mallard, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yeah.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for the appointment.
Thanks, Fran. So now I'm going to officially call our meeting to order and for January 4th, 2021. Boy, it's really nice to say that. I have to just pause and say, I'm glad that we're out of 2020. And do we have any announcements for tonight?
Yes. So the Fourth Annual MLK Day Clothing Drive Fundraiser will be held in collaboration with the Colonial Neighborhood Council between January 13th and 18th, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. Please place all donation into standard-sized trash bags. Donations are being collected at the Cedar Grove Barn. Tax receipts are available. The information is also available in the latest edition of the Recreator. Reminder to all local restaurant, deli, food truck, or other food service business located in the township. Grant funding has been made available to all local businesses impacted by the pandemic. The deadline for grant support ends at noon on January 6th, 2021. Additional information is available on the county's website, www.moncopa.org. Holiday trees and reeds can be placed herb side on Wednesdays with normal yard waste. Please be careful to avoid leaving trees in the roadway where they may obstruct parking or traffic. That's it.
Thanks, Fran. Excellent. Okay, so now we're going to keep moving on to the rest of our appointments for tonight. Do I have a motion to appoint Richard L. Mallard, Jr. as Township Manager and Secretary by approving his employment agreement with White Marsh Township?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And I apologize, I did not ask for public comment after that. So do we have any public comments? Okay, we're going to move on to Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. We do?
No, I just said, "Thank you."
Oh, thank you.
For my appointment. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Rick. Looking forward to working together again.
Absolutely.
Do I have a motion to appoint Kevin S. Barron as Finance Director and Treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Kevin, officially. Do I have a motion to reappoint Sean Helwom as Assistant Secretary?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Those opposed? Welcome back, Sean. Do I have a motion to reappoint Christopher P. Ward as Chief of Police?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? I think I heard everybody. Hey, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Charles L. Guttenplan as Zoning Officer?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to reappoint Sean P. Kilkeny as Township Solicitor?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any board comment?
Yeah, I would just briefly, at the request of a resident, I just want to put on the record that I do rent office space from Sean in Norristown. It's not a conflict of interest under the State Ethics Act. It's not a violation of our township code, especially because I don't receive any financial benefit or pecuniary benefit from the relationship. I have a signed lease. I pay market rate. In fact, I pay more at my current office than I did at my former office in Norristown. So I'm not receiving any special value, but a resident asked for me to disclose it. So in an effort of transparency, I will do so. I still believe there's no conflict. My intent on voting on the motion, but I am disclosing it. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any public comment?
I have a comment to make.
Okay.
I don't believe that Mr. Kilkeny is an appropriate solicitor for White Marsh Township. I don't believe he represents the residents of White Marsh in an appropriate way. I think that the fact that he is the sheriff of Montgomery County and, which is an elective position for which he is paid taxpayer dollars, puts him in conflict with his being able to be a solicitor for White Marsh Township. During his campaign, he has received campaign funds and the potential for those individuals that gave funds to come before this township and do business here were presented, and I think that speaks to a conflict that can't be ignored. With regard to Mr. Drosner renting space from Mr. Kilkeny, that to me seems completely unnecessary. And while Mr. Drosner, and I'm sure Mr. Kilkeny believe that there was no conflict there, it's one of the few professions, the legal profession, that allows such things to take place. There are plenty of places for Mr. Drosner to rent space in, or sublet space in Norristown. And it puts him in a potentially bad position should he have a disagreement with Mr. Kilkeny or vice versa, where he has to pay Mr. Kilkeny rent. There should be no financial transaction between any of the board members and any of the various individuals that come before White Marsh Township for business. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to reappoint Krista Heinrich as Township Engineer?
So moved. Second.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Krista. Welcome back. Do I have a motion to reappoint? And if we can each name our vacancy board member, I will start with Sherri Petracas.
Christopher Selecky.
Sarah Earlbaum.
Patrick Duran.
Ari Grace.
These are all of our vacancy board members. So do I have a second?
Second. We're so moved, rather.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any board comments? Public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, is everybody good? I don't know what that was, but it stopped. So now we are going to go through our reappointment of existing boards from our various boards, commissions, and committee members. And what I'm going to do is make a motion and read each person's name, the board that they're on, their term, and their ending date. So this will take a moment of time. These are reappointments. And at the end, I will look for a joint approval on that. So just bear with me here as I read this list. Do I have a motion to appoint William Kramer for the zoning hearing board, five-year term, ending 12/31/2025? Mark Weinstein, zoning hearing board, five-year term, ending 12/31/2025? Aaron Kostick, planning commission, four-year term, ending 12/31/2024? Pat Duran, planning commission, four-year term, ending 12/31/2024? Natalie Burkowski, shade tree commission, five-year term, ending 12/31/2025? Patrice Ferine, shade tree commission, five-year term, ending 12/31/2025? James Convy, park and rec board, four-year term, ending 12/31/2024? Thomas Manley, park and rec board, four-year term, ending 12/31/2024? Tim Ferris, White Marsh Authority, five-year term, ending 12/31/2025? Alex Di Giacomo, emergency services board, three-year term, ending 12/31/2023? Carol Proud, emergency services board, three-year term, ending 12/31/2023? Deb Schrero, environmental advisory board, three-year term, ending 12/31/2023? Steve Kaufman, open space committee, three-year term, ending 12/31/2023? Hugh Moulton, open space committee, three-year term, ending 12/31/2023? Sharon Harvey, media communication advisory board, three-year term, ending 12/31/2023? Crystal Taylor, media communication advisory board, three-year term, ending 12/31/2023? That's
So moved.
Second.
Good. Do we have any board comments? I would just like to say a thank you to everybody who gets involved. And I appreciate everyone's insights and time commitments to these boards. Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, again. Just remind everybody, if you are interested in getting involved, to, you're welcome to jump in on meetings and see if it's something that you're interested in doing. You can certainly apply on the website, but it's welcome to actually jump in the Zoom meeting. I think they're all beginning this year through Zoom. Is that right, Rick?
That is correct.
Okay, so check out the website for details on when those meetings are happening to see what they're about. When it comes, all right, we're down to public hearings. And do I have a motion to open a public hearing for a liquor license transfer at 531 East Germantown Park Pike, the market at Lafayette Hill, Inc.?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. Rick, I think I turn this to you.
Yes, I'm going to actually turn it over to our solicitor, Mr. John Walco, who will start the hearing. And we have Ms. Collins here as our court reporter.
Thank you very much. We will adjourn this public meeting and adjourn into the public hearing for this intermunicipal liquor license transfer for the market at Lafayette Hill Incorporated, that being the applicant for the business, the market at Lafayette Hill, located 531 East Germantown Pike in Lafayette Hill. I have a number of exhibits before I introduce the representative for the applicant and the attorney. The first, or exhibit one, is a December 17th, 2020, letter from the applicant's attorney, Anthony Baldecos, requesting this hearing and submitting for this transfer. A board exhibit two is the floor plan for the proposed location where this license will be utilized, which was attached to that letter. Or exhibit three is a proposed menu of food that is prepared at the market of Lafayette Hill. Or exhibit four is a narrative about the owners who are here today, the Licio family, Peter and a Licio, who are the representatives for the applicant. Board exhibit five is the proof of publication of the legal notice for tonight's hearing, which was published in the Times Herald newspaper on December 23rd and December 28th, 2020. Or exhibit six is the proposed resolution for this intermunicipal liquor license transfer. As stated there, and the purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to ask questions and to make comments regarding this request from the applicant to transfer this license into the township. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Baldecos, just to provide a brief overview of what is being requested here and whatever else he would like to tell the board about this application and his clients.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. My name is Anthony Baldecos. I am, as Solicitor mentioned, the liquor license attorney for the market at Lafayette Hill, Inc. Mr. and Mrs. Licio are online with us this evening. They are the owners and operators of the supermarket. And I've included the exhibit package, which was explained previously by the solicitor. We're before you this evening, again, connection with the intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license to the supermarket, which is across the street from the township building. Similar to other supermarkets in Pennsylvania, Mr. Licio wishes to offer a selection of beers and wines to his supermarket customers as a convenience and as a complement to the groceries and other products he offers. That's why we are here tonight. And in pursuit of that, we have entered into an agreement of sale to purchase license R19538, currently located in Souderton, Montgomery County. We are asking that you approve the resolution permitting the transfer of the license into White Marsh Township pursuant to the sample resolution attached to the agenda. What I'd like to do at this point is to present some brief background, followed by the facts and support of the application. In Pennsylvania, there is no liquor license specific to supermarkets. If a supermarket wishes to offer beer and wine to its grocery customers, it must acquire a restaurant liquor license. This type of retail license automatically allows the sale up to two six-packs of beer to go. And if the supermarket wishes to sell wine, it must further acquire an expanded wine permit, which allows up to three liters of wine to go. No retail licensee in Pennsylvania can sell distilled spirits in full, unopened bottles to go. Until such time as the General Assembly creates a new category of retail licenses specific to supermarkets, the current liquor code requires, as a technical matter, that supermarkets have a serving area of at least 400 square feet, seats for 30 persons, and one or more cash registers dedicated to beer and wine purchases. The cashiers assigned to these registers scan all driver's license, regardless of the customer's appearance of age. Frankly, most supermarket customers come there to purchase groceries, some of which may require refrigeration or be frozen, and few persons actually take the time to sit and eat a sandwich inside the market. Nevertheless, the general public, employees of the shopping strip center or of the surrounding businesses, and even of the township municipal building, can go to the deli counter, order a sandwich or salad, pay for it at one of the registers, and eat in the service area if they choose to do so. However, the experience of most supermarkets is that purchases are to go. And of course, during the past year with the COVID restrictions, these serving areas have been largely closed to the public. Much like the application you heard about a year ago for the giant on Ridge Avenue, the typical concerns associated with a new restaurant operation are largely not applicable when you're dealing with a supermarket. Nevertheless, by way of specific bullet point factors, the menu is limited and has been made part of the exhibit package, as has the floor plan, showing the serving area and the Licio family's biography, which gives you some background information on Peter and Renee, if you don't know them already. The serving area is going to be in the front, right in front of the plate glass windows. And the deli is just to the left of that where you can order a sandwich or a salad to go or to eat there. There will be no servers. Everything is self-serve. The essential character of the supermarket will remain unchanged. The hours of operation will continue to be 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 during the week, 7:30 to 7:00 on Saturdays, and 7:30 to 6:00 on Sundays. No smoking is permitted inside the premises. The market currently has a combination of between 30 to 35 part-time and full-time employees. As is typical, the PLCB manager, who will be Peter, and his staff related to the end sale of beer and wine will be ramp trained. This is the Responsible Alcohol Management Program. And it's an educational program offered by the PLCB, which teaches licensees the proper and lawful way to dispense alcohol. As you know already, the surrounding area of the location is primarily commercial in nature. Mr. Licio owns the real estate where the market is located through an affiliated limited liability company. The market consists of approximately 14,000 square feet. There are approximately 175 parking spaces, which are all subject to cross easement. So no matter which store you want to go to, you can park anywhere you want. Food deliveries and trash pickup will continue to be from the rear of the store. No smoking is permitted within. Mr. Licio is present at the market every day. And I have explained to him, and he understands that the store, if licensed at this location, will be subject to the Pennsylvania liquor code and the PLCB regulations promulgated pursuant thereto. Mr. Licio, you've heard this presentation, and do you adopt the testimony I gave to the board as your own in this matter? Peter, can you hear me?
You're on mute.
Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, yes.
Because you have your phone next to, or another device next to your computer. There's vibration frequency between the two.
We got it. We should be fine. Can you hear me? Yep. Yes.
Peter, you heard the testimony I gave to the board. Do you adopt that as your own?
Yes, I do.
Everything I said is accurate? Okay, thank you. I'd like to offer the exhibits into evidence. I'd ask the board to favorably look upon this request and approve the transfer to the township. I feel that the presentation as presented supports a finding that the applicant will run this operation lawfully, responsibly, respectfully, and will not create any adverse effect on the health, safety, welfare of the community. Again, we request that the transfer be approved, and I have nothing further. If the board has any questions of me, of a technical nature, or of Mr. and Mrs. Licio of a factual nature, please ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldecos. Does the board have any questions for the applicant or their attorney at this time? Hearing none. I'll turn it over to the public. Is there any public that's on the call or at the virtual meeting today that has any comments or any questions regarding this application today?
This is Sedel Zo. Yes, I do have a question.
Please proceed.
You've described the hours of operation as they are currently. If it turns out that the wine and beer to-go sales are robust, would you consider expanding your hours? So that is a question that I have for the applicant and their attorney. And I have a question along a similar line for the township. And that is, could the township condition its approval of this license transfer on certain hours of operation so that that we don't end up with a beer and wine store to go that's open until 11:00 at night?
Typically, I've been there for 20 years. I don't see myself changing my hours. At one time, I thought about changing them to 9:00. We run a couple stores in the area. We're in Gladwin and Wayne, and we're happy with the eight o'clock hour. Actually, right now with COVID, we're running to seven. So the only thing would move would be go back to eight o'clock, and on the weekends, go back to seven o'clock and six o'clock. We dropped everything an hour with COVID, just because of staff help and just to get people out of the building.
Right.
I don't see this in the future going that way. I don't see no reason to.
So then my follow-up question to the township is whether you can condition your approval on limiting the hours of operations so that we don't end up with, in effect, what becomes an attractive nuisance in our township.
The purpose of this hearing does incorporate the testimony and the exhibits that were presented. So any approvals that are given are given pursuant to this hearing. So that by sense has already been incorporated. If there was anything that was to change that was not in line with this, and it didn't, in fact, create an additional change of use or required additional permit, and I'll defer to Mr. Gutten Plan if that was needed. For example, if they're to go to a full non-grocery store location, this would certainly be something that the township would be able to utilize if there was an issue with that.
It doesn't quite answer my question. And maybe I can be more specific. Can the township?
So we're not approving. This isn't an approval of the use. So there isn't, again, the simple, basic purpose for this hearing is to see if there is a objection from the public and the township to having it come in. So it isn't something that really is conditionable. It's not, we don't write decisions. We don't have findings of facts. We do have hearings. We do have proposed resolutions for whether or not there is an objection to it. Again, if there was an objection in the future because of a change of something that was not represented at this hearing today, and I believe your concerns about the hours have been represented, that will not happen. It would be something that the township would be able to take action on to protest that license.
So a follow-up question. The township's resolution approves the transfer subject to approval by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. That license comes up for renewal how often? The underlying license?
I defer to Mr. Baldacose on that legal.
License is renewed annually. It's every two years, there's a full renewal, and then on the odd year, there's a validation. But it's fairly ministerial, so long as the applicant is current with the Department of Labor and Industry for its unemployment taxes and with the Department of Revenue for sales taxes and withholding taxes and income taxes. If they have clearances for both of those, and they pay the fee to renew the license, they have a health permit that's in place, and there are no complaints or problems with the license, then those are routinely renewed annually.
And what about the wine expanded permit? Is that an annual renewal?
Yes. Yeah. You buy it once, but then when you, it gets tacked on to your liquor license, and then you, when you renew the license, it's the same thing with a Sunday sales permit to be open. Like this, this location would have to have a Sunday sales permit to be able to sell beer and wine on Sundays during its operational hours. So it would have that, it would have the expanded wine permit. It would not have, you know, there's others like extended hours diners that stay open 24 hours with liquor licenses. They have to stop selling at 2:00 a.m. the liquor, but they can, they have a permit to stay open until seven in the morning when you can sell liquor again in Pennsylvania.
Okay. And this is a question for the Leachills. If I may, do you have employees who are under the age of 18?
Yes, I do. I have some cashiers. I probably have a lot. Probably maybe about four or five, oh, under 18. I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, about four or five under 18.
So my understanding is that cashiers under the age of 18 cannot handle this ring up the sale, these sales. Is that correct?
Yes, this will have a separate register for liquor sales. I mean, yeah, beer and wine. It'll have a separate register, and that's always, at all times. That'll always be over 24 years of age.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
I have a question. It relates to conditional use. I know that's not the purpose of this, but this is village commercial, this district, and is the current conditional use approval for the market cover this usage?
I'm unaware of the conditions for the conditional use. Obviously, if there was a condition that would be in violation, that would be a zoning issue that they would have to deal with in addition to dealing with the Liquor Control Board for their request.
So if it's not a specified use, does it have to receive conditional use approval by going before the Planning Commission and then again before the Board of Supervisors?
It depends on whether or not there is a change of use. If there were conditions that were violated, for example, if there was a condition provided that they not sell beer or wine as a condition of their approval for the market, and they would be in violation of that condition, they would have to address that. Again, I'm not sure of any of those conditions, but if the use was simply to operate a supermarket on the property, they will have to continue to do that. And in fact, this resolution does condition an approval of this transfer on the fact that they operate a supermarket on the property, and they can't just sell beer and wine, as I'm revealing the resolution now to address Ms. Sub's question. Not to address the hours issue, but for the purpose question. So, Mr. Glick, if there are any violations of that conditional use, we are not waiving those with any of this approvals, if any, that would be granted tonight.
Okay. I only ask this because the conditional use request that came up for the smoke shop just down the way. I'm just trying to understand how conditional use comes into play and when it is required in the VC District.
John, maybe I can jump in. If you can clarify the next step. If this were to be approved tonight, what happens next?
What's next is that they then need to proceed with this license to get their full approval from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board in order to have that license transferred and awarded to them thereby effectuating their sale. So they still do have to deal with the approvals from Liquor Control Board. This is just a piece of that process. If they got that license and there was any violation of our township ordinances, whether it be a conditional use decision or illegal zoning, that isn't something that's addressed through this process.
Would, though, say that then proceeds through to the state? Do they then have the go-ahead? Do they need to come back to the township for anything before they can start setting up and rearranging and getting ready for selling beer and wine?
Not for the purpose of beer and wine, whether they needed to do any sort of interior permits for the fit-outs, for any changes. Again, I would defer to the code and zoning for that, but not for this board, anything would be administrative permits.
Charlie, do you have anything to add to this?
Dave Sander and I discussed this, and his determination and mine was that there was no conditional use necessary for this, that this supermarket and the retail sales predate the VC District, and there was no substantial change to what was occurring here other than to obtain this license to sell additional goods. So the determination was that there was no conditional use requirement necessary in this case.
Okay, so just to recap, what I'm hearing everybody say is that if the Leachills decide to change the format of anything different than what they currently have, then that would have to then come back possibly, depending on what the change was, through zoning, planning, the board. But as it stands now, if it gets approved tonight, then it gets approved through the state, then they can proceed.
That's my understanding from a zoning standpoint. Dave Sander and I did discuss the restaurant aspect, and it is not significantly different than what they have there already. And again, as a result, no new conditional use is required. They already have a seating area that'll be slightly rearranged, but it's not significantly changed from what is there today in order to meet the state requirement.
Do we have any idea of how long it takes to get processed through the state, what the turnaround time is?
I can respond to that. It takes usually between 60 and 90 days.
Thank you. Do we have any other board comments?
I'd just say it sounds like a welcome addition to the community. Market Lafayette is a wonderful business. We're on Germantown Pike serving our community. Sounds like a great way for them to diversify their market, trying to keep up with the big box stores and try to keep them in business. So I think it's a wonderful development for them and for the neighborhood, and I'm looking forward to it.
I do.
I'll second that, Michael. Well said.
Thank you.
The public comment or board comment? Hearing none, we will close this hearing, and we will adjourn into the public meeting. This resolution is now in a position to be voted upon by this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for that. Does the board feel comfortable on moving forward to vote on this tonight? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-01 granting liquor license transfer for the 531 East Germantown Pike, the market at Lafayette Hill, a LLC?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
You're on mute, Rick.
Try that again. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes.
Thank you, and good luck with everything.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Here.
Have a good New Year.
Bye-bye.
You as well. Thank you. Okay, so going down our agenda, we have the approval of minutes listed next, but this is kind of a different meeting with it being a reorg meeting, so we will be considering the adoption of our December meeting minutes at our next Board of Supervisor meeting. And I'm going to jump down to the rest of our resolutions that we have tonight. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 20-21-02 approving the 2021 Annual Emergency Operation Promulgation Plan? Promulgation?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you, Chair Nester. This was something that we did earlier this year when we had our Fire Marshal Nick Weaver came in and recommended it was something that we needed to do on an annual basis. So when we adopted it, we said we would do it at our organization meeting each year. It just identifies that we have an emergency operation plan in place. It also allows us to apply for any type of grants in the event that there is any kind of disasters, natural disasters, or, as we've seen last year. So this allows us one administrative step that we need that the board must take action on. And now that puts us in good standing when we apply to KEMA and FEMA for grant assistance.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-03 establishing the Board of Supervisors' meeting schedule and format for 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, any lead-in for this?
I actually do, because this was one of the recommendations from our PSET's organization when we do the meeting schedule was the fact that this year, we would never have to do this other than knowing that we do meetings via Zoom. So we have the meetings the same schedule, same time on Tuesday, same days of the month. It's a Tuesday, the second or fourth Thursday of each month. And if we are going to be holding them via Zoom, that will begin at 6:00 p.m. Zoom instructions will be on the Township website posted when we go back at some point, hopefully in 2021, to full public meetings in person. Those will again be held at 7:00 p.m. Again, those are on the second and fourth Thursday of each month. There's no change in the day. The other is that we have departmental workshops. They are on Thursday, February 4th, Thursday, May 6th, Thursday, August 5th, and Thursday, November 4th quarterly, and they will be held at 6:00 p.m. Again, if they are Zoomed, those instructions will be on the Township website.
Thank you. Excellent. Any board comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-04 establishing the Township travel and business expense policy for 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
So this is a policy that really isn't being used that much in the past year. As we've all seen, no one is really traveling, but nonetheless, it is just our travel policy providing per diems for various meals for those that would have to do any type of traveling for conferences, trainings and the like. Again, our training budgets were in the positive, very positive last year because most of the training that we were able to do, they weren't all canceled. They just went virtual. But nonetheless, the action tonight is to approve the travel and business expense policy for the Township for 2021.
So just a random question. Do you have any idea when you're going to travel next?
You tell me. When are we all going to travel next? But, you know, it all depends. I mean, a lot of our professional conferences that, you know, many of us are involved in or are boards on, while we are hopeful that we can be in person, we're planning for virtual as well in 2021. So we shall see, see how the year materializes.
Rick, does this differ in any material way from the prior year?
Don't believe that there's anything different with it. No, I don't believe there's anything different. I'm just checking to make sure as you copy and paste these that there wasn't something that was.
Yeah, I know the cents per mile changes periodically, but I don't think that that's been changed.
What we have, that's, I believe that is correct. One of the things that we look to change there, so I don't believe so.
Do we have any other board comments or questions? Any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Or Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Miss Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero five establishing the township holidays non-uniformed, non-union employees in twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any comment, Mr. Miller?
Uh, no, the only comment is, uh, obviously twenty twenty-one is not a presidential election year, so therefore we will have eleven holidays for the non-uniform personnel in twenty twenty-one.
Very good. Any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Miss Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, that's the more kind of business part of what we had to get through. The next part that we have is a little bit different. Um, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero six authorizing a joint defense and joint privilege agreement opposing Ambler Borough's application for approval of the abandonment of the Public Water Service with the Pennsylvania Utility Commission?
Second.
Second.
John, is this heading over to John?
Yeah, I, I'll tee it up a little bit for, for John here, cause he's been working on this for the township. There are approximately two hundred and fifty residents in the eastern part of the township, closer to the Barrow Ambler, that are actually serviced by Ambler Water. Uh, most of the, majority of the township is serviced, as, as you all know, uh, by Aqua. And Ambler has their own, uh, water department. Uh, they, uh, applied to the Pennsylvania Utility Commission to create an authority that would oversee the water utility for not just Ambler, not just our two hundred and fifty. We are the least amount of customers, uh, from a municipality to Ambler Water. But there is also customers that come from Lower Gwinnett Township, Whippein Township, and Upper Dublin Township. So they applied to the Pennsylvania Utility Commission and the municipalities, uh, other than Ambler have had some concerns with the application. I'll turn it over to John. He's been working on this. He can briefly summarize that to the board and the action that the board would be considering this evening. John?
Yes, um, Pennsylvania law requires that any municipalities, when the ender and agreements of the municipalities have to do it through a resolution. What, what, um, White Marsh has done is we filed a petition to intervene in Ambler's, um, petition for the abandonment of the Public Water Service, as have those other townships. Uh, all of the townships are unified in what they're looking for, um, in potential defenses and potential outcomes, uh, and attempt to try to sort of merge our resources, um, and to help unified approaches, uh, when that includes, you know, the preparing of briefs, calling of witnesses. Um, as we do have a, a, uh, schedule for the hearings that are set for the summer, uh, and all of the events that have to take, uh, to occur up to that part, um, all the solicitors to believe it's in all of the township's best interests to approach this in a unified defense and, uh, furthering of their petitions. Uh, and that's what this petition, this is what this resolution and this agreement does. It's to, uh, solidify and to put to writing um, that we are working together, uh, unified in our approaches. It will be helpful, uh, for the sharing of information and preparing of witnesses, uh, to aid in confidentiality, um, between the townships. Uh, so this is something that's certainly within White Marsh's benefit as the benefit of the other municipalities that will also be entering. Uh, my understanding is going to be entering into the agreements themselves. I'm happy to answer any questions about this agreement. This matter still is in litigation, so I do not believe it is prudent to discuss the underlying merits of, of our approach in public comment or in the public hearing. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions on the agreement.
And can you, you know, I see on the resolution here that, you know, the other municipalities are listed to sign this as well. Can you, did you already update like the status of where they are? When are they voting on this?
Uh, I'd imagine they would, they would also be this month. This was something that was just circulated late in December. Um, so in order for, for them to proceed, again, we have spring deadlines when it comes to sort of the first, uh, uh, matters that have come up after our, our, our initial pre-conference hearings. So I would imagine that, um, they're either doing it tonight or sometime this month, uh, at this is being potential.
And you feel comfortable that everybody's on board with this that's listed?
Yes, and if someone wasn't on board or if something was to occur where we no longer wanted to be on board, we have the option of backing out. Uh, we're not committing ourselves to anything. It's just in order to, to work together for that time. Uh, this, this is the proper step.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Any public comments?
Yes, this is Sedelzo. I understand that the Ambler Water Authority serves not just Ambler, but residents in some of the surrounding communities. And I understand that we are by virtue of this resolution agreeing to join with those other communities in a collaborative defense. But I, I'm missing, and please forgive me, I'm missing, what is the underlying issue? What is it that Ambler is trying to do that we are defending against?
I, I can comment on that, um, cause that isn't something that I think is, uh, a point of privilege. Um, Ambler is trying to create an authority, um, to manage the water that would, would address some of the residents of all of these townships. Uh, the hold up point at this point is it's something that can't be settled. The, of our oppositions on the base that Ambler would have, uh, as they're proposing it, majority control of that authority board. And the townships are concerned that with that authority, uh, they become a lock loading, voting block and could make changes in the future or do things that are to the detriment of township to Ambler's benefit. Uh, we've tried to work around that, uh, and so far we have not been able to resolve that matter. So it's the concern of the, the, the compromise, the composition of that board. The townships aren't opposed to the concept of creating authority. It's just how it's being presented that the townships are unified, uh, with their concerns and their approach, uh, to opposing how Ambler would like that board to be.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much. Um, and what is the legal structure now in operation that is different from what an authority's legal structure would be, very briefly?
Right now, the Ambler is, um, is, it's under control by the Pennsylvania, uh, Utility Commission, the Public Utility Commission. An authority would not be, uh, this, so this is very similar to some of the concerns that, that a lot of municipalities have about selling a sewer system.
Right.
Um, from an authority, uh, and having the, you know, the PUC, not the authority regulate. So they're sort of doing the opposite.
Okay, thank you. That, that's really quite helpful. Appreciate that.
Or any other questions?
Anything else? Okay, so seeing no further comments, uh, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Miss Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, John, for working on this. Okay, we're moving into motions. Do I have a motion to approve the vehicle donation of a police vehicle to another law informant agency?
I'm moved.
Second.
Chief, would you like to take this?
Sure, I could take it if Rick would want.
Go ahead, Chief, let you talk.
As part of last year's, uh, vehicle purchases, we purchased a, uh, new K nine vehicle, uh, that actually is used by Officer Sweeney and K nine diesel. In the process, we were able to move his K nine vehicle to our spare K nine vehicle. No longer having a need for our old spare K nine vehicle, which is an older Crown Victoria model. However, that car is equipped with dog safety equipment. And though not suitable for heavy patrol activity, the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department would be able to utilize that for their K nine unit in and around the courthouse. Uh, K nine vehicles that are used and still in good working condition, uh, for the use they have are few and far between and hard to come by. And, uh, the value of the vehicle is limited. So as a mutual, uh, mutual aid, so to speak, to another, uh, law enforcement agency, we are requesting to donate this vehicle to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department for their use, for their K nine unit and the safety of their K nine. Their K nine dogs that are, and their handlers. Uh, this is, we've done this before with the county where they've, uh, provided us vehicles or we've provided specialized vehicles back to them. And again, it's a limited value vehicle.
You, are there any board comments? Any public comments? Well, I appreciate the ability to share vehicles like this. I know we've received donations and it's nice that we can reciprocate. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to select the township depositories for the deposit of township funds in twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, should I give this to you or is this going to Kevin?
I, I will, I will go off with this. If I, if I say anything wrong, I know Kevin will correct me. Um, so each year we go through all the bank depositories and places in which we, uh, have money in the township. I'll, I'll go through these, uh, that are in the detailed in the memo to you in your agenda. So bank depositories, our, our main account is with TD Bank. We have money in Pennsylvania Local Government Trust. We have many, money in Pennsylvania Treasury Investment. Uh, we also have some CDs in with Santander, Great Eastern Management, Wells Fargo, and True Mark Financial. Nothing that has changed there. Uh, auditors, uh, will be approving this next, but our auditing, auditing firm uh, was with Dreslin, uh, Dreslin, uh, Mr. Dreslin, uh, retired, sold the company. Uh, he was not our primary auditor. Our primary auditor is going to this company. We had one more year of engagement with them for the twenty twenty financial year, so they are honoring that engagement. We get to stay with the same auditor who is familiar with our, um, with the township's financial, uh, systems and financial, um, situation. And then next year, we would go out, uh, do an RFP for that. Uh, no change to our tax compliant auditor or conflict auditor, RSM, McLeodry, McCarthy Company. Uh, outside tax collectors are business, uh, tax collection, business privileged tax. We are recommending a change here. Uh, we put an RFP out. Uh, we received two responses. One was from Tri-State. The other was from Burckheimer in our review and looking at the cost and the overall, um, the overall, uh, customer service and familiarity with the township. We're recommending that we go actually back, uh, to Tri-State. At this time, they, they, uh, are a tax collector that does, uh, much of, a lot of areas, a lot of municipalities in the area. So we're recommending Tri-State there for our business privilege, uh, tax collection. Earned income tax, open space earned income, that's all with, uh, local services. That's all under Act thirty-two. Montgomery County is engaged with Burckheimer to collect those taxes. No change there. Uh, police pension plan, uh, no changes here either. Our actuary is Conrad Segal. Our investment advisor is PFM Advisors and our custodian is PNC Bank. As far as the non-uniformed, we recall this past year, we recently changed. We are now with the non-uniformed uh, pension plan is with Nationwide, with RBC Wealth Management as the financial custodian there. So that, that is the slate. Um, one change to the business privileged tax collector and then the financial auditor. It's a different company, but our auditor is still the same. Other than that, no changes are being proposed.
Thank you, Rick. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have a couple escrow releases tonight. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number two for Rock Core LLC, five oh nine dash five fifteen Bethlehem Pike in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents?
So moved.
Sorry, again.
Krista?
Good evening. This was a single family detached, uh, residence on a newly created lot. The applicants, uh, or developers represented, representative requested the final release of escrow. Uh, we inspected the improvements and found them to be in accordance with the approved plans and are recommending that final release.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, none? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number two for two fifty-two Roberts Avenue LLC in the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents?
Moved.
Sorry, again.
Krista?
This is the, um, two single family detached residences constructed at the former Lincoln Fire Company. The developers representative has requested a partial release of escrow. And again, we inspected the improvements and found them to, to be in accordance with the plans and are recommending release of escrow.
Excellent. Thank you. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Great. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Disposed. Okay, motion carries.
Chair Nester?
Yes.
I know that we went over in the depositories, the auditing service, but if we could just formally approve them and under the, uh, motion to approve the new of the.
Oh, did I skip one? I'm sorry.
It's okay. I discussed it, but this is the actual taking it separately to approve them as, uh, performing the audit for twenty twenty.
You got it. Yeah, I checked it off and we talked about it, but we didn't, we didn't make the motion. Do I have a motion to approve? Wait, can you, how do I pronounce this?
Barzy, Gowie, Amon, and Fault CPA.
Do I have a motion to approve? Barzy, Gowie, Amon, and Fault CPA to audit the township financial statements for twenty twenty.
So moved. Second.
Any board comments? Public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
All right, so we are now down to the public comment period.
Laura, if I could just jump in, Rick or Kevin, do we need to appoint, um, someone for business tax collector? Or is that just included in the group that Rick went through? I know there's a memo from Kevin.
Right, that was, that was included in the depositories, um, with Tri-State, so.
That didn't need to be done separately. Okay, just making sure.
It was all together.
Thank you.
No problem. Good question. Want to make sure everybody's clear with what's happening?
We want to make sure we approve that, not go back to, go back to it, so.
So like to open it up for public comments?
Sedell Zo, I would request that either Chief Ward or Supervisor Drosner provide an update on the status of the acquisition of body worn cameras for the police officers in our township.
I can take that if.
Sure.
Michael, if. Since the, we just entered into 2021 and today is the first official business day of the year. We have, under the 2021 budget, my staff and I have reached out to the body camera provider, which is WatchGuard. And we are working through with them for the acquisition timeline and information like that as we are required to do. As I said, today was the first business day of the year under the new budget, so we immediately are in contact with them. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of moving pieces with that. Once I am able to determine the timeline and speak with Mr. Barron about financing, we will have a report to the Board of Supervisors with an estimated timeline for that project.
And, and is there any further action required on the part of the VOS in order for you to proceed with that purchase?
And not that I'm aware of, as long as everything comes in as presented in the budget hearings, we should be fine. The work is now on myself, my department, and our supplier to get the equipment in, get it properly installed, properly trained, proper policies and procedures on the equipment, all of which take a little bit of time because it's a very large moving project.
And you want it to, to work out properly without anything?
Yes, yes, it's.
I appreciate your efforts and I look forward to hearing the update. Thank you very much.
No problem.
I appreciate the question and thank you for the update, Chief. Yeah, it was my understanding that, you know, with our approval of the budget, that this was already included. So, you know, that is great and we will continue to move forward and certainly update as we get information. Do we have other questions from the public or comments? Okay, any board member comments? Well, I just want to say thank you to this incredible team and all of our residents. It is a team. That's how I see it, that we all work collectively together. And I look forward to a year where we continue to do that. And I'm really hopeful that this year is going to be stronger and better and move forward with some continued improvements, streamlining things and just making our township even stronger. You know, I appreciate everybody's time and input. I know it's late, tried to push through it quickly and appropriately. You know, we're available, reach out if you guys have questions. And, you know, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. We did have an executive session, but Rick, I don't recall exactly the dates other than tonight. Did we have another one? Maybe not.
I can, I can look and see if we did.
We had an executive session to discuss real estate.
On 12/22, Rick? I got something on my calendar, 12/22, I think.
Yes, we had 12/22 to discuss real estate. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, good, good job. And I don't, I don't think there were any others.
There was not. I'm looking at my calendar. There, there was not.
Okay. All right. Well, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll move it once.
Happy New Year to everybody. May it be healthy and happy for everybody. Take care and good night.
Happy New.
Have a New Year.
You have a New Year.